Nice voice.
You feel okay?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. It's my winter voice. Town of New Canaan Town Council. This is the town where the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, January 18th, 2023. It's 7:05 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Penny, will you take the role?
Robin Bates-Mason. She's not online either, right? Absent. Rita Patino?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Mark Jemsky?
Here.
Steve Carl?
Here.
Luke Hoffman?
Here.
Mike Morrow?
Here.
Maria Notton?
Here.
Kimberly Norton?
Here.
Hillary Ormon?
Here.
Christina Ross?
Here.
Penny Young here. We are all here, with the exception of Robin.
Thank you, Penny. All right, moving on to item number two, minutes. Approval of the following minutes. We have minutes from public hearings held on November 16th and December 7th, and our regular meeting on December 14th. And we did have a pretty long discussion about these minutes. So anybody want to add anything or comment on anything or?
Good.
Everybody good? Okay. Oh, you do? Okay. All right, Kim.
So I wanted to, you know, I was looking over the minutes and I understand that they meet all the requirements in terms of how they've been adjusted and things like that for open meeting laws. But I wanted to discuss some, some other things that we talked about, which was enabling Zoom transcript and Zoom captioning. So I don't know if we should talk about that now because I'd like to have a discussion about that. I could make a motion about it or we could do this and then we could talk about that. But it's, it's involved with the minutes.
Okay. Yeah. So we can do it during, we can do it at the end of the meeting and committee reports and just go through it if you want. I mean, is that, is that a good time to do it or do you want to do it now?
It's not going to be as long as last time. So I don't think it will.
Steve, Steve, it's Mark. Can we approve the minutes and then have this discussion at the end? I think that's probably more relevant.
I, I, I don't want to have it at the end because it's going to be brief and I think it's important. So.
Okay. So, so do you want to, do you want to, can we approve the minutes and then have the discussion? You want to do the, the discussion before the approval?
What if, what if everyone else think?
I think we lock up the minutes and then we'll go right to you, Kim.
Okay, cool.
All right.
Does it affect the approval or not approval of the minutes?
No, it's probably a policy going forward. Right? Is that what you got it on, Kim?
It could be whatever.
Okay. All right. So with that said, then let's approve them with unanimous consent because there was no change in or anything. So that's, that's all said. Thank you, Tucker. All right, now, let's talk about the Zoom transcript of the minutes.
So I know that we, we had a spirited discussion last meeting and I appreciate everyone's patience for listening to it. And the reason why it's important to me is because I think that people want to be able to access the minutes. And by having a new policy, which is kind of having very basic minutes, but having a transcript, there's no way for people to search the minutes. They have to listen to say like a three hour meeting or something like that. And I know that Zoom enables transcripts to be made. And I think someone said, well, they're not always accurate. So what I was going to suggest or bring up, could we do that and put a disclaimer that says that they're not, you know, 100% accurate based on Zoom technology or whatever. And then there's an ability to put captions on the video when someone's talking, not just have it be a transcript. So when we're talking now, there'd be a caption under the video and Zoom does all that for free. So I don't see the downside of doing it, but I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Steve? I tried that after our last meeting because I, I tested it out at one of our recent meetings, not a town council meeting. And it didn't get in the first paragraph. It had 14 different inaccuracies. It Waveney, it couldn't pick up. It didn't pick up people's names properly. I'd be more concerned with the fact that we'd be putting out information that we know is inaccurate versus a recording that's 100% accurate and minutes that hopefully are approved. But that, as I say, I tried that because I thought, you know, when you and I talked about that at the last time, but that's my only concern is that it really couldn't get any of the nuances correct in some of the basic wording.
So is it, just so I understand, Tucker, you're saying that the transcription service stinks? Like it's inaccurate?
Doesn't pick up. It doesn't, you know, it's like Siri, right? When you say Waveney or Owen Oak Ridge or something like that, it just doesn't, it doesn't pick up the words properly. And certainly people's last names and some of the, you know, the nuances of the conversation.
Right.
How bad? I mean, how badly? I mean, if there's just a word here and there, I think that would be fine if you're, if you're getting the gist. If it's just, but if it's every other word, then that's not going to be very good.
Yeah, you can try it. I mean, if people's names wrong.
Well, that's, that's actually a good point, Tucker. Why don't we, could we try it and then maybe review it at our next meeting and just take a look at the results of the meeting and try to, you know, go through it and say either we like it or we don't. I mean.
We haven't enabled it now. So if you want to try it at the next meeting and then you all can listen to it and.
Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we try on the 25th? We'll try it during the.
Yeah, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, Kim. I think it's an excellent suggestion. I think, you know, it's 2023, right? And, you know, Rita, you make a good point. Is, is it a 5% discrepancy or is it 50% they're not hearing anything? Then it's not worthwhile. I, I think we do give this a turn of the screw and, and put a little bit of effort behind this because that just further gives our community transparency to what's happening here. And, you know, we, we have a lot of good thoughts and good ideas that's happening here. So I think if, if the community understands what, you know, what's really happening and can hear it, can view it at their own time. I think it would be very appropriate.
Well, and actually, after we had that discussion, someone brought up the idea of search, like being able to search things. So I, I, so I, I actually agreed with how, where we ended up. But then someone brought up the fact that, because I was like, oh, you could just go on your video, see the agenda. But in this day and age, you should be able to search for, you know, and, and however we do it, I don't know if it's transcript or whatever. I think that is a very valuable thing to make it easy for people to search what they want to hear about that. I, I think it's a good point.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I, I like the idea of having an accurate transcript. But I have to be a stickler. It has to be accurate. I mean, this is a public body basically making law here, making important decisions. And we can't have anything inaccurate. And it sounds to me like it's inaccurate if we don't edit it. Now, if we want to take up the question of how much it would cost us to fix it and make it accurate, you know, we could put an estimate around that. It's not something Tucker is going to volunteer to do on her own, but, you know, we could pay for that. And, and then I think it would be a good service, but I could never support something that you're giving somebody in the public a, a record of a meeting, of an official meeting of the town government of New Canaan and saying, by the way, you'll understand this is inaccurate.
I think giving it a try would be the first step.
Oh, yeah.
No, we don't want to do it because it might be inaccurate. Okay, good point. But let's give it a try and see like where we are in, in that.
No harm in that.
I agree.
Okay. And I know, I know Kim's, you know, the, the whole gist of this is try to get more information to the public and be more transparent. And, you know, obviously that's what we want to do. So.
Yeah. I mean, I think everyone's doing a great job. It's just that in this day and age, now that we're doing Zoom meetings and to have someone just have to watch a three hour meeting from start to finish is not that user friendly. So to be able to search it by caption or by audio search or whatever, which I think that's capable, we could do that as well. But if it's not accurate, I guess it's going to be hard for them to search. But I just think that we could make it, you know, raise the bar a little bit in terms of people being able to go back and see what we talked about in maybe 10 years from now. I know Christina, I think you looked up some minutes from the 1970s or 80s and you said that was very helpful. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. I wanted to understand how the town council and when any property was sold. And I went through many years of town council records and it, it was pretty informative. And I think that they're invaluable because as the years progress, we're not going to be here and the next group needs to understand how the process works. So I think it's invaluable to have the notes.
Maria Notton has her hand up.
Oh, hey, Maria.
Hi, I just want to say Rita's point is really good because the most accurate, you know, transcription probably will come from when one of us are speaking and it's clear and that would allow someone to search for a section of the video, you know, if they want to search for where something happened in the video. Plus I think Siri is so much, I mean, I use it all the time and now it, you can watch it, listen to your voice, transcribe, and then it corrects things. So I think it's a technology that's just improving and I think just try it. Let's give it a shot.
Thanks, Maria. Okay. Anything else on this? Okay. See you on the 25th and do that. All right.
Thanks.
All right, moving on. I wanted to see, is Josh on, on, not, not this Josh is? Yeah. So Josh K. I talked to earlier and he's actually, I tracked him down to, you know, just do a quick interview. He's up for a position on our ethics board. He's actually in London. And if we can move him forward, it's getting late there. And I'd like to move him up if we can. If, if you can get him on.
I'm here, but I can't enable my video.
Oh, that's all right, Josh. Thank you for joining us. So I talked to you earlier and obviously we've, we've got your resume here. Can you just talk to us about your desire to be on the ethics board?
Sure. So.
Josh, there you are.
There we go. First, thank you for, for, for moving me up in the, in the agenda. It's a little after midnight here. So I appreciate it. So my, my name is Josh K. I've, I've lived on Silvermine Road with my wife, Megan, and our kids Benji and Charlotte for a little over two years. But moving to New Canaan has really been a homecoming for me since I grew up in Wilton. So even though I graduated from Wilton High School, I also am a graduate of Lewis School of Driving. So I, I feel like I know, know New, know New Canaan very well. And, you know, the opportunity to serve on the, on the ethics board, I think is a, is a, is a good fit for my background. I'm, I'm a lawyer. And prior to taking my, my current role as Chief Counsel at Arcadian Risk Capital, I spent 12 years as a litigator. Mostly at Paul Weiss in the City where I did a, a range of commercial cases and white collar cases and public interest cases. And I think the experience I had that's probably most useful for serving on the ethics board was as a law clerk to a district court judge in the Southern District of New York. And the judge I clerked for, William Polly, who actually passed away last year, was, was a really good judge. And he was a tremendous example of someone who could dispassionately apply facts to the law and a lot of the facts. And if I could bring that to the ethics board, I think I could serve in Canaan and help ensure that the, the ethics rules are dispassionately followed.
Thanks, Josh. I'm, I'm going to open up to the floor for questions from the council. Anybody have a question for Josh or? All right.
No, Josh, but this is Mike Morrow. You have a great background. I've been for Judge Polly many, many times. I was a past jurist and even when he ruled against me. So you've got my vote.
Well, thank you.
Question.
Kim.
This is Kim Norton. You have a very impressive background. Thank you for, for putting yourself forward on this. I just have a question about, there's been some things that have happened on the ethics board and I know there's been issues about when to ask for legal counsel as opposed to on the board who are attorneys themselves making decisions. So this might be, I don't think it's that tough of a question, but how do you know when you're using your own background and when it's time to seek the opinion of the town attorneys or other legal counsel to make decisions?
It's a really good question. I haven't followed the, the prior proceedings carefully. So I'm not going to speak to any of those, but I think, you know, obviously the, the, my background as an attorney will help me interpret the rules, but to the extent, to the extent the advice of counsel would be useful in, in determining those rules, I think we should as a board rely on that counsel judiciously. Not defer to them entirely, but, but rely on the counsel to the extent it's helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom have any questions or any hands raised out there? Okay, good. We'll go get to Arvin in a sec. Let me just finish up with Josh. And Josh, I think, you know, from the perspective of the ethics board, it's actually great to have somebody that's fresh, that doesn't have any preconceived notions about what the ethics board is or, or was. I mean, you're, you're on, you're, I think you'll be on soon. And having that fresh set of eyes and that fresh, really just a fresh approach is, is really going to be nice. So I definitely want to support your candidacy. So.
I mean, I, I don't know Josh personally, but I reviewed his resume and his qualifications. I'm just reading his resume and he seems to be very, very highly qualified.
Great. All right. So to let Josh go, let's go ahead and we'll take a vote now so he can get to bed. So need a motion in a second. So.
I'll move it.
Penny, Penny and Hillary seconded. Sorry, I'm looking right. All right. All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, Josh. Up and on. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm looking forward to serving.
Safe travels.
Good day.
All right. Good night. Where is Arvid? Bring Arvid up.
I think I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
There you are. Hi, Arvid. How are you?
Good. Let me just turn my video to, I think I have a video. Here we go. Hey, how about that?
There you are.
We did something today. We got on, we got on Zoom.
How are you? All right. So you, Arvid is the second, second review here. And he is also up for an appointment on the ethics board. So I've known Arvid a long time. So from, in a number of ways, and I definitely support his candidacy and, and I want to open up the floor to any questions for Arvid or. Arvid, you want to just give us a little background on, on who you are for folks that may not know you?
Yeah, sure. No, I, my wife and I have lived in New Canaan for 15 years. I live on Parish Road, which is a, it's a bipartisan street because my next door neighbor is Robin Bates-Mason. And then down the road is Hugo Avila. So we've got both Democrats and Republicans in our street. That's a joke. I'm working my timing and no, and we've lived here 15 years, love the town. My daughter graduated from New Canaan High School two years ago. And, you know, my son has gone through New Canaan County School. He's in boarding school and just the town's been really just a wonderful place to, to, to grow up, to raise a family, honestly. And I've lived all over the world. I've been lucky and, and this is a way to really try to help the town and try to contribute. Honestly, that's really the, you know, my acts, if you will. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't play one on TV. And, but no, I think it's a very important role. And I'm in, as the, as Josh said, I'm somewhat familiar with some of the issues. I'm really more, you know, frankly, just from anecdotally hearing it from it. I'm not, I haven't gotten a lot of detail towards what's happened in the past. So the idea we try to come into this and try to be, you know, impartial with what we're doing and, and try and do the best things for the town. That's really my goal.
Arvid, are you currently a constable in town too?
I am. This is officially my third term and which will be in, over in, at the end of this year. And yeah, and I think that'll be, that'll play be it for me on the constable side. And I was previously the RTC for a couple of terms. Obviously through church and through, through my kids, you know, been pretty involved in the community. And, you know, as I kind of go into my next phase of life, I'd like to be more involved.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any questions for Arvid?
I don't have any questions in him, but I just was curious, who's, who's cycling off the board?
Oh, the ethics board. Good question. Tucker?
Tammy Gardner and.
I'm Tucker Clausen.
Tucker Claus and.
Tucker had gone up last year.
Okay.
Earlier this year. Oh, the Steve Simon?
I'll look it up and get back to you.
Okay, that's no problem. All right. So, so we need a motion. Christina, second. Mike, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Arvid. Thank you for coming.
My pleasure and I look forward to work with all of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Tammy Gardner and Steve Simon are the two replacements. And we want to thank them for their service as well. That's, that's at times a quiet board and at times a busy board. So thank you for your service. All right, moving on. Next item up, first selectmen update. Oh, public comments. Sorry. Missed that. All right, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name, street address. Comments are limited to two minutes, subject to a total number of speakers. Would anyone from the public like to speak?
No one, no one has their hand up on.
On Zoom. Okay. And I don't see any hands raised here. So. All right, now, without further ado, item number four, first selectman update. Welcome, Kevin.
Evening. How are you all?
Excellent.
I don't have much. I gave this report last night to the Board of Finance. And first of all, COVID, we're not talking a lot about COVID, fortunately, New Canaan, because there are high vaccination and booster rates is not experiencing what the rest of the state is experiencing. So we really don't have a spike here, especially the kids in school. The State Department of Public Health has indicated the new variant in China is not really coming into Connecticut. What we're seeing is the Omicron variant still. So for the, I think. Anyway, we continue to do testing and vaxing and boosters at the Irwin House. Three days a week for testing and one clinic a week for vaxes. We're doing under five or under six year olds right now. And we do also do, continue to do free flu shots. So Moderna announced just last night or today that they've got a vaccination for RSC, what's called RSC, the respiratory. Big news. And so there'll be more shots for those who want to get vaccinated. Capital Projects, Waveney House bathrooms are underway. The Recreation Department has moved around on the floor and so the bathroom will probably take four or five months. I think we have Tiger on if he wants to supplement what I say here. The Playhouse renovations are going along very well. The Cinema Lab has completed $2.3 million of their fundraise, which is good. We are, as you can see, if you're on Elm Street, the interior demo is moving along. The exterior renovations have really been most complete. We're going to have a whole series of exterior replacement of sidewalks and ADA ramps and stuff when the, that'll be later in the spring. We've begun to order some of the things that have a long lead time, such as the chairs, which are coming from some European country. I forget which one. And.
Norway, I think, right?
And they, they have to be, you have to order shipping long in advance to be able to get this kind of thing in time. We're still looking for October 1, which I think is aggressive, but you know, hopefully we'll be opening on by October 1. 2/20 Elm, you will have it in a couple of weeks. The Board of Finance last night recommended approval of a bond resolution to do the Board of Ed renovations at 2/20 Elm. We've had five bidders and two bids were still evaluating which is the better bidder to go with. The superintendent last night explained to the Board of Finance what the, what his plan is. And the cost came in higher than we anticipated. We budgeted in the original purchase of the, of the property, $750,000 for the renovations, but they've added another million. I think what's the number, million three?
Yes, that's correct. Million three.
So, and Board of Finance asked that we give them an update of what the projection was. And so we'll do that. PD renovation, the Police Department renovation is coming along well. They've, as I've said before, they selected their owner's rep. There was a meeting last Thursday morning. And so they've hired their subcontractors and they're on schedule to probably have the police move out October 1st, same time as the Playhouse opening, I guess. So. So any questions about those items? Otherwise, we started our budget process yesterday morning with the Board of Selectmen. The numbers are much higher than I expected and hopefully we're going to have some more finance action on some of those items that we're really getting whacked by inflation, obviously, especially in the energy area. So we're going to see higher numbers than we, that we had hoped. Anyway, that's what I have. Happy to answer questions.
Great. Any questions?
I'm just curious for the PD renovations. I, I know we, are we still on track for the original timeline or where, what do we think?
We're, we're, well, the, they actually talked Thursday about perhaps maybe not moving until the springtime. And, but they hope to be able to move October 1st. We, after the Board of Ed moves out on, at the end of June, they need a couple of months to renovate it for the police. And so October 1st is the target.
In terms of, I'm, I'm sorry, just in terms of it being complete.
Oh, as far as the, you know, it's going to take two years to, once they, once they move out.
Anybody else? A question for Tiger on that renovation. We approved a generator for that building. Where, where is that generator going to go?
Generator.
Or a pad, right? Is it a pad?
Well, we have a mobile generator that we built with our funds. So we can move it around to, in the primary location where we, we used to supplement is the transfer station. The, actually the sewer plant. So the power goes out, the sewer plant has to run.
Right.
But we can move that to any facility. We're going to install equipment which costs about 80 grand to be able to hook up the generator. And we can do that at other buildings as well. They don't have a generator. So we can move that mobile generator around.
Yeah. So it won't take up a parking space or whatever. That's going to be, okay, good.
It'll be moved there if needed.
Yep, good.
Quick question. Did, did you say that the, the Board of Ed budget was an additional 1.3 million or it was a total of 1.3 million?
Additional.
So on top of the 750.
And yes, we, I explained that last night. We anticipated that the office side wouldn't take a lot of renovation and Joe Sagarant, he actually said, you know, move in, live with it for a while and see what you got to do. Because they're moving 50 people basically into the building, the configuration for a bank, large spaces, is one conference room. They're going to make three offices. They're, they're doing more demolition than we anticipated. The, the school side would launch and the, and the alternative program requires more demolition and we knew that. But so we probably, you know, should have provided for more upfront, but.
So that's a, that's a two instead of a one.
That's a two instead of a one.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's more than double.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah. Is there still enough room for them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they, you know, they have a lot of wasted space in the current facility where they have bathrooms on every floor. And this is much more efficient space.
Have we found a renter for the other?
Well, it's not our responsibility. The, the, one fortress is moving out and being replaced by a tenant from John Ingalls Building across the street.
Okay.
I shouldn't have said that.
Okay.
They've had, they have another tenant for the, and they have three spaces up there. So they're looking for, and they were talking to a financial firm that would be a nice, nice add to the town. So.
Hopefully, hopefully they're going to get everything.
Myself as, as a landlord, but.
We don't want to, we don't want to go back in there after spending that kind of money. So hopefully we get it right. That's.
Well, you know, they renovated 220, I'm sorry, 39 Locust that it cost a million dollars that they paid over, actually we have two more settlements on that over 10 years. So they, they, you know, it's going to be their permanent home for the next.
Right. That's true.
Forty year, 50 years.
Kevin, just so I, maybe I didn't hear that correctly, but so the total renovation budget is to what?
750, which actually part of the 750s had been spent. We had to take out the interior stairwell and stuff and 750 plus 1.3.
Yeah. So 2, 2.05.
2.05. That's what I said.
40,000 square foot building? I mean, that seems extraordinary to me. Now we would, of course, I know you're looking at me like I have 10 heads.
Yeah.
So what does that mean? It's, it's, it's office space. I mean, that just seems an extraordinary amount. That's all.
Well, will we see it? Will we see a breakdown of it, of the work?
I mean, I like.
Because I, I think, I think everybody on the council would like to see that at least. I mean.
I firstly, I was, with multiple people here, walked the building, which I thought is, is a very nice building, great location, was a huge supporter of the acquisition and moving, you know, that department there. To add another 1.3, it seems more like electrical and sheet rock. Like it's, yeah, they did have.
A lot more demolition than we had ever anticipated. They're going to redo the bathrooms and they're going to, they're going to, they're taking out, you know, they're, they're doing a lot more demolition than we ever anticipated. So.
Does that include the fit out, meaning the furniture?
Furniture, they've gotten donated to them from, from Bankwell. So they, and from, from Greedy. So they have, they're going to leave their furniture at the, for the PD.
Yeah.
At 39 Locust.
So we're going to hear from, we're going to hear from Brian anyway. So he's got to come through us, right? So.
Last night to Board of Finance and you can ask him all the questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Listen, we don't have anything in front of us. So we just threw a number out there. So we could say, hit it super low or that's absolutely insane, like big. You know, until we see what the breakout is and the demolition and stuff like that. But I thought the building was in really good shape. And as I've indicated, like I have a very close friend that's an executive at, at Bankwell. So I actually visited the building before. And again, it was a huge supporter to the location and the bones of the building. Just additional one thing would, would be interested is, you know, doing redoing the bathrooms. I don't, that's actually, I think the one.
Glass doors in the front are a hundred thousand dollars, you know, to help with the lobby, glass doors. Things are not cheap.
They, they have security stuff too, that they're going to have to do probably for with kids there. I mean, obviously that has to be done as well. So we'll see. It will take.
I'm saying, you can't say the number seems huge or it seems low because you don't know what the, what, what the details behind it are.
Yeah. I just have a question. Yeah, I just have a question about, I'm just wondering if you have a really quick update on. The information that you you've been pursuing for like the third party information for the cell tower.
Sure.
If you can give us an update.
Working with Dr. Reed and Dr. Pierce. And actually, Dr. Gerber from Silver Hill Hospital, who's our behavioral health advisor. Harrison Pierce identified a scientist at Yale, research scientist at Yale. But then we found the site and council recommended this. PhD. Harvard. School of Public Health. Who also, I think he's been thirty five years or so. He's an expert, globe aware, what expert in electromagnetics and R F. He consulted with the town of Wellesley on their. System that they installed four years ago. So he's. You know. I sent you his resume?
Yeah, he did. Yeah, his name's Dr. Peter Valberg.
Peter Valberg, I spoke to him and he's. So he's he's a pretty, pretty renowned expert.
That about our.
He's recommended by the sitting council. He consulted with the genetic setting council several years ago about.
Yeah.
So people have.
Right.
Surges about things that are not real, you know.
So is there is there an actual RF study being done or is he?
Also going to do the the update of the study that you asked for.
The coverage or the or the RF study?
Going to hire another independent firm. Do the and then Cityscape will consult, so we're working on that part too. That's going to take two or three months.
And then I'm sorry, I'm just want to make sure I have it. So coverage is one thing and then are we doing like an actual RF study with the the towers that are in place right now, just to understand what RF emissions we're getting now?
That can be done, you know, as far as the compliance with FCC standards. I mean, that that's measured, you know. Greg Gotti said if one put that in their lease, so we constantly.
Yeah, and he was saying that they would actually pay for that.
Yeah.
Like he was saying Homeland Towers and or Verizon would pay for an RF study. And we could pick the the town. I shouldn't say we, but the town could pick. The the vendor to do that. The reason I'm saying that is because we do have antennas in place, so for instance, we could measure the RF. Emissions of, you know, the tower that's. At Waveny today at the at the towers. And, you know, measure certain distance.
Covers quite a footprint for the reason that the antenna at a hundred thirty feet tall.
Hundred, hundred percent.
The higher you are, the better coverage you get.
Agreed. And so I was just wondering if, I mean, since we have that in place, it would be a great comparison to know what the RF emissions are there. And to your point, compare it to FCC guidelines and the international precautionary guidelines. It would just be really great if we could do that. Right.
Okay, let's not go down a rabbit hole on this subject, but. Hillary has her hand raised.
Hopefully, that's.
Yeah.
On the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
So I just did a quick review of Dr. Vosberg and I just want to be upfront. I have serious concerns about him and the consulting group.
Well, he's he's primarily a professor at Harvard.
Was. I I don't believe he's on the faculty anymore and I agree that his he's extremely impressive. His his credentials are impressive. He has. He has been on the side of asbestos manufacturers, tobacco companies. It's been alleged that he has. Created studies to fit. A litigation perspective before. That he's a, that this consulting firm has often been a rented white coat to prove a point that a lawyer has been asked to make. The Connecticut Siting Council, I appreciate that they've recommended him, but they're also not totally unbiased. I mean, their whole. Reason for being is to find appropriate places to put cell towers. So I just want to put on the record that I I'm, I want to see, I assume he's been retained. So I'm looking forward to reading what he has to provide. I will be reading it with a very skeptical eye because I'm skeptical. I don't know that Dr. Vosberg or Gradient Consulting has ever. Not been on the side of a company. Or industry that's alleged to be emitting toxic chemicals. And so I'm concerned about that and I just wanted to put that out there that I have grave concerns about the research that we're going to see. And so I don't know that there's another consulting firm out there, but I am going to be looking at this with a very keen eye.
I looked at him primarily as a professor from the department. The Harvard Public Health School and I don't know that somebody compromised their values.
I don't think he's not, I don't think he's. Any longer on. The faculty to.
I think he might be.
Okay, okay, let's check.
Yeah, I'm curious to know who the Yale researcher was that Dr. Pierce had recommended, but.
Well, he he was more into into chemicals and things.
Okay.
And Harrison Harrison, when he saw Valbridge's resume, he said, that's the guy to go with.
Yeah, his resume is extremely impressive and so I will be looking at this.
He's on an international committee on on electromagnetic and and radio frequency.
Which is, and I, like I said, I will read it very with an open mind, but with a little bit of skepticism, just with the research that I've done and I would encourage you guys to do it too.
Yeah, but and I think the point that Rita made before about measuring other existing. Places in town. To me would be a very interesting exercise. I mean, you already see, okay, this is what each one there's, we could measure more than one, we could measure a few just to see, okay. This is what is measuring. In every day already and this is what we're dealing with and. You know, if we know what what a new tower would emit, then I think people would have a little more, a little more open mind to what we would be doing there, but.
I agree.
You know, we're a long, we're a long, well, we're a long way. Before we get to that point, but so just to just to remind everybody on the twenty fifth, we have. A meeting at six P M. That's a public meeting here at six on the on the subject and we're going to go from six to seven with public comment, so that's really just listening. And then as we go forward here through this research, I mean, we're talking about months here, we're not talking about weeks here, so we're going to, we promised the public that we would have a health. Meeting. On health only and and we will do that once we get some of this research done, so. Look forward to doing that, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question about what? The petition asked for for the twenty fifth. I I'm sorry, I haven't been to town halls to read the petition myself. But what did the public, did they just want a hearing where they?
They they specifically asked that we review the decision by planning and zoning to, that's really the focus of the. Of the meeting. Now, you know, some folks are going to speak probably more on the tower than they would on the eight twenty four decision, but. We've given an hour to to listen and, you know, we received the petition and. You know, we welcome the public comment and that's what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, next up, number five, Town Players in New Canaan, consideration and possible vote. Of a request by the Town Players in New Canaan. To amend the lease agreement between the Town and New Canaan. And the TPNC to include the use of potting shed. We have Tiger on the call. Tiger, you in a car?
I am, Steve. I'm at a hockey rink in West Haven.
Unbelievable. You never stop working, man. And of course, we have Patricia Spigani here from Town Players. Welcome, Patricia. Nice to have you back. All right, so. Just maybe bring us up to speed. Who wants to go for, I guess, Patricia, you want to go first or Tiger? Okay.
I'm good.
Sure.
All right, so again, I'm Patricia Spigani. I'm here representing the Town Players of New Canaan. Thank you for inviting us back tonight to present this request and and happy new year. So as Steve read, we have a request to the Town Council to amend the current lease agreement, which was in place since nineteen eighty. Three. Eighty two with the Town Players for use of the Powerhouse Theater, the original lease agreement that has all the terms and conditions of that agreement. And we're here to ask for an amendment to that agreement for the use of the potting shed. So what I'd like to do very briefly is when we ask for use, what does that mean? And why did we ask for you to review this request tonight? So for the use. Our plans, as you know, have, as we've presented before, was to. Turn the potting shed into the Shed Theater. Wait, let me. On the campus of the Powerhouse Performing Arts Center. So that we could turn it into a Black Box Theater. And also for use as a hub for. Theater arts education at. The Powerhouse. We would use it for youth. Education for theater arts, for seniors, for community events. We envision high school kids coming and using this four hundred square foot space. As just that, a local place that they can come and do performances for their friends, for their families in a very informal space. We would also use it for rehearsal space for other productions. And in fact, it would increase our capacity to do more programming and more programs at the Powerhouse overall. So we're really excited about the possibility of of doing this. It's it's strictly an amendment for use. There's no funding request associated with this. It's strictly a use. To the and an amendment to the existing building. So why are we asking for this tonight, the beginning of the year, before you go into the the budget season and all the reviews? For for two very good reasons. One is that it will support our fundraising efforts. So we've hired a consultant to assist us with our fundraising campaign for the complete capital improvements that we want to make there. Another discussion perhaps. And with your support. We will have. You know, demonstrated town support. Your agreement tonight will demonstrate town support to arts and culture and the increase of arts and arts and culture programming in town. And it will also allow us. To be eligible to apply for a grant that I think you've got information for, Good to Great Grant, that. Comes around once in a while, not every year by Connecticut Humanities. It's a very generous opportunity for us. It will allow us to truly make this a good to great project and would go after funds that we wouldn't otherwise be able to to get. The other thing that's going on, Tiger, as you maybe remember, has. Secured the Rothbarts of their firm to do the design work for that part of the. The campus, which are the new. Public bathrooms as well as the design of the exterior for that building, the potting shed. So with your agreement, it will also allow us to have a conversations with Carl and Rose as the tenant of that building of the use. So when they're putting doors and windows and floors in that. They can do it with the thought in mind of it being used as the theater. So I thank you for considering and voting to approve this tonight so that we can move forward on fundraising and. Getting the design put together for that use of the potting shed.
Right, thank you, Patricia. All right, so we've got Tiger on the line. I see Greg Riley out here too, so, you know, we'll open up the floor, questions about. You know, we open up questions about the lease, we can open up questions about the grant or, you know. And take them as we go here. So anybody have any questions as far as? I mean, I know Patricia's been in front of us before and. As with every single fundraising that goes on in this town over the years. You reach the point where you say, okay, we want to raise the money, but we also need the town to step up and say, okay. It, we are green lighting this project. We want this to happen. Let's go. And that's what that's where we are right now, so.
So when would it be available? To be used?
I'm going to let Tiger actually answer that because he's driving the project.
Yeah, so I have the Rothbarts, as as Patricia mentioned, I've got Carl and Rose are working. Not only for the the renovation of the the Shed Theater, but they were also working for the town. On the installation of the new public bathrooms. And then the renovation of the potting shed itself, you, what the town responsible for is the exterior, the roof and then a new floor. And with that. A look, a holistic look at the the campus itself, that's the reason why we hired one architect between the two. Between the two partners. And then I've reached out to a landscape architect to give us just a nicer feel of the of the patio in between. They'll be done. With their work for the town. Relatively quickly next month or so and then. We. Could go out to bid at that point in time or we were trying to see if we could have a synergy. Between the three projects, the the exterior bathrooms, the potting shed and the interior work. For the lobby. For the Powerhouse itself and see if there might be a synergy for just having one contractor on the campus. In its entirety, so but we are, we're we're close to being able to go out to bid and move forward.
Thank you, Tiger. Have you estimated how much? The Town Players will be investing in the facility? You're going to? Put lighting and things in there or?
We're in the process of pulling that together.
But just so everybody's clear, this is. This is a significant cost for the Town Players to bring this thing into being.
The potting shed, actually, I don't think it's a significant cost to make it usable. We and we have. Pledged donors to support getting the portion that we need to fund. Done in a, I would say, a base case. If we have the ability to apply for this grant. We'll probably. Be more aggressive and do a stretch design as well. But to make it functional, I think we have the funds to make it functional with HVAC, electricity. Basic lighting, we already have chairs. I mean, we. We can take the shell and make it functional. Within some period of time of the the building being. And the campus, the grounds being landscaped.
I have to say that I haven't been coached. I mean, I didn't. Patricia didn't give me or Joel didn't give me notes to say, but I do have to say that. The town, the energy. That the Town Players has has generated in 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 recent years has been phenomenal. And I have no doubt that they would make tremendously, you know, good use of the space. And I also know from having some experience in the operations there that. It will be immediately and heavily used because the space constraints. In the main building are substantial. I mean, you're constantly adjusting for the lack of of space and this would be a tremendous opportunity. And I think it's the highest and best use of the space. So. I hope we support it, yeah.
Any other, any comments, questions? I, Greg, could you just come up for one second? I just want to get a better sense of the of the, can you give us a handicap the, I handicap this potential? Come on. Give us some hope, give us some hope.
First of all, good evening. Greg Riley and I am merely assisting the Town Players of New Canaan. I'm working for the town. They are the applicants. And I'm trying to help Patricia, you know, make maximize the chances for success. So that's my role and. You know, you never know who else is going to apply, how many applications there will be. You you really can't. Wager the success rate. However. You know, with all the good work that's being done. And we had a meeting with the Director of Connecticut Humanities last week. And he's the one that said to us, you know, if you guys. You know, just show us the lease that you've got a commitment from the town. He's ready to, he's ready to approve of our letter of intent for application right away. He said, I'm going to set, you know, I'm going to pass this along, so. It's almost like we've we've passed the first mark already if we get this. This approved use.
Good.
And then, you know, we're we're just going to put together a smart application and. Make sure it fits their priorities and their guidelines and eligible costs. And I will have a, we'll have a very good chance. I just can't put a number on.
We were encouraged to be bold. Right? So this is really about good to great and it gives us the opportunity perhaps to do. Some improvements inside the Powerhouse Theater that we wouldn't. Necessarily have been able to do, so I can give you a high level of the grant from the the research that we've done and the assessment if you.
I mean, I don't think that's necessary. We'll wait and wait and see how you do. We're counting on Greg, though, to get this done, so no pressure, no pressure.
So. This is a grant for nonprofits, so you as a municipality cannot apply for the grant.
Yeah.
And be a recipient of the grant.
It's for capital costs for for.
Our nonprofit.
Arts and culture.
Arch and culture, who has. A. If they don't own the building, has to have that lease in place. So we described the situation to the the director and and again, he was supportive and thought that it met the criteria. Of eligibility that they have for the grant.
Well, thank you for bringing.
They're familiar with Town Players. They have granted some money to Town Players.
We've received.
So they they know the program and.
Good point. We have received several humanities grants. As a nonprofit in the last year, which is good, including a grant recently, which is unusual for them to support our marketing efforts and outreach efforts for ordinary people. Which is coming up in February and I invite you all to come.
So part of the, part of the discussion about the Black Box Theater was the use of of kids and and the programming that can be done with youth and I think that's a probably important part of the presentation when that.
It's very important. I I think. They were. They were impressed, and I'll say Connecticut Humanities, that as a theater, we're doing a lot to involve the community in everything that we do. They were impressed, and I'll say Connecticut Humanities, that as a theater, we're doing a lot to involve the community in everything that we do. Not just put on a production. So that's a core tenet of what we are doing as we've, you know, reevaluated our. A mission statement as an organization in town and reevaluated our strategic plan. Right, which we've just recently completed with the Harvard Business Community Partners. So we're formalizing our overall approach. And what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Really quick, I just, I want to commend you on your resilience, your persistence and your creativity. You took the feedback. I mean, you've been for us and you've been for the board of finance. You took the feedback, you went back, you're you're being more creative um, about trying to find the, you know, resources for this. And I just think, you know, I just want to commend you on all your efforts and they're lucky, the players are lucky to have you um, you know, spearheading this. So. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. But we 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 are doing this together, right? This is, we're doing this together.
Alright, I'd like to make one point. Besides the fact that I support this, but the reason I support it is because the town for years used the potting shed to store. Things for the family fourth stuff. We have plenty of space in Wavine House for storage in the basement and the attic. And um, so we don't have a use for it. You know, once we decided last year to build new bathrooms for the public. Across the way, which will make, make that courtyard kind of squared off. Um, and we are responsible for the ADA compliance of the courtyard. So that's why Tiger is looking at. Because when the justice department came in and measured everything, I mean, you know, they look at everything. Um, so anyway, the uh, we don't have a use for it and it makes a lot of sense to have the, have a campus where it's part of the performing arts center. So.
One, one question for you, Kevin, while we have you is, as the council, you know, if you were sitting up in our seats here, would you be asking? For any kind of safety net clause in here to put it back to the board of finance should something go wrong with the the grant or?
Well, the interesting thing is our lease, our lease from nineteen eighty-two is terminable on eighteen months notice.
So if something really.
Either, either, either side for any reason.
It's our job as a town to protect the town, obviously. Sure. So, you know, so eighteen months you could end it if, if something went off the rails type of thing. Okay, good. That makes us all more comfortable. Alright. Alright, with that, anybody else? Uh, anybody out there? Maria, any questions? Okay. Alright, so uh, I think we can move to uh, to approve this. So, does anyone want to make a motion? Alright, second, Mike, Tom moved it, Mike second it. All in favor? Is it, any, any reason to read the lease? Those are, that's in the minute, so. And we have it in our tablet. So we've all read that. So um, so we're gonna um. Vote on the request of the town players in the Canada to amend the lease agreement between the town and New Canaan and the town players in New Canaan to include the use of the potting shed. All those in favor?
And I'm in favor.
Thanks, Mark. Just, Mark, appreciate it. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much, Patricia. And actually, take a second and give us a quick plug because the work you're doing with Silver Hill on this new, on the, on this Ordinary People show is really remarkable. So take a minute and just tell, tell us about, you know, a minute and.
Thank you for the opportunity to do that, Steve. So town players of New Canaan, one of the things that we want to do every year is have a production. Or a theme that specifically gives us the opportunity to do outreach in the community. Given the focus on mental health in the community, um, we have all experienced loss, grief. Tragedy in some cases as a result of the pandemic. Um, we selected Ordinary People. As our production coming up in February. And um, without doing a spoiler alert here, I'd like to say this is actually a love story. Uh, but there is grief and tragedy along the trajectory of this story. It will be a compelling drama. Uh, we've got a great cast. It's going to be a great show. But with this, we wanted to make this a little bit different. Um, we did reach out to Silver Hill Hospital and they, Dr. Michael Groat. Was uh, kind of offered to us to work with us and he has rallied. He is the chief clinical officer at Silver Hill Hospital. He happens to be, he's been living in New Canaan since twenty nineteen with his family. But he also, in that aside from that, well, he happens to be a nationally resound ex, nationally known expert in suicidology. Which is part of one of the subjects in this story. So he's acting as a behavioral health consultant to the cast and the director. So to make sure that we can portray the characters with empathy and authenticity. He is also going to participate and lead audience discussions after our Sunday matinee performances, our three performances. Which is phenomenal. He's already been at several of the rehearsals. Uh, it's great. His wife has offered to help us. Uh, set decorate the lobby. She's very creative and also a trained psychi- psychiatrist. So we have got this wonderful partnership um, with Silver Hill and also with um, human services. Bethany Zaro here from the Canaan. So it's, it's fantastic. As part of this, um, I came to understand the importance of the New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program that. You, the town, Kevin's leadership has set in place with Silver Hill. And we decided to host Town Players of New Canaan and host a fundraiser at the Carriage Barn Art Center. Followed by uh, production of Ordinary People on February twenty-fifth. So my goal for that is for the town players with support from the town is to raise twenty-five thousand dollars. Which would go directly towards the continuance and the funding of year two of the urgent assessment program. I'm in the middle of planning. I could use some help if anybody wants to volunteer. Uh, but I think so far it's going to be very well received. We'll have uh, again, an event, a prior event. Dinner event at the Carriage Barn and then you can walk down the sidewalk and see the production. Um, and I'm really looking forward to the whole thing. It's going to be great. And we're doing a lot of other community outreach. We're working with the Mental Health Club at New Canaan High School. The library is going to have a book display of related topics. We will create in our program a list of mental health resources in the community so that anyone who comes to the production. Or is make it's visible in our uh, marketing for the show can see what resources are available in town. So we're making this, you know, a great production and good entertainment, but also making a um. A way to highlight the resources that are available in the community.
That's great, Patricia. Well, that's a ton of work and thank you so much for.
Expect you all to come to the show. Alright, and you'll all get invitations to the fundraiser. So thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you for letting us get on with the, the theater in the shed. So thank you. We'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Alright, item number six, cash management and interest income discussion. We have Andrew Brooks here this evening. Uh, Andrew's gonna lead us into discussion about uh, the financial performance of income and some strategies. And he's uh, he's presented to the board of finance. So we thought it'd be a good idea for us to see this. So thank you, Andrew, for joining us.
To see all of you. Uh, it's been a while uh, for some of you, but um, I'm going to uh, at some point share a screen. I'm going to try to zoom in as much as I can so that you can follow along. Um, but I'll first start off by just making some general statements. You know, it's a really unique interest rate environment that we have right now. Um, obviously, if you've looked at your 401K or your stock portfolio, it's not doing so great in all likelihood. But from a fixed income perspective, rates have not been this high in the decade that I've been doing this job. And that's a great opportunity for New Canaan and the taxpayers because that means on the cash that we have in our custody. We can earn additional income to offset taxes that residents would otherwise have to pay. Um, so that's the real value out of this opportunity. And rates have been hiked dramatically over the last six months. So what I'll do is I'll share my screen. So I do have a card. And I share, when I, now we can get into some numbers. Uh, but I think this conversation is important as you enter budget season and start to think about some of the extra revenue that we're going to be able to generate. Factor that into your calculations for for the budget process. Alright, so let me see if I can, alright, here's the screen share. Okay. Let me see if you can, can you see that sort of? It's okay, I'm gonna enunciate verbally um, as we go through it. But what I have here is a list of our interest-bearing accounts. So the town has more than a dozen bank accounts. Some of which are interest-bearing, some of which are not interest-bearing. The checking accounts primarily are not interest-bearing with the exception of two, which I have in this list. We have a pooled cash account where most of our bills get paid out of. Um, and then we also have a um, our Webster uh. Uh, Board of Ed AP and payroll account, which was actually just recently switched to a ZBA, a, a, um. Uh, an account where instead keeping cash in it, it will just draw um, as expenses are paid from a pooled cash account. Um, so that we don't have to maintain and worry about keeping enough cash in our checking accounts to pay bills as our check runs come due. Um, but what you can see here is interest has gone up dramatically over this period, you know, partly because of the increase in rates. Um, as many of you may understand though, our banking partners don't necessarily increase the rates automatically. It has required a lot of communication with them to leverage competing rates, treasury rates in order to get them to come up. And thankfully, over the last six months, we've been very successful at negotiating better rates for the town as it stands right now. Um, and I'll just scroll over to showing our year-to-date interest um, as of the end of December. Was five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is actually more than a total budget amount for the full fiscal year. So we've already exceeded. You know, I think we budgeted five hundred thousand for fiscal twenty-three. We've now exceeded that in just the first six months of the year. And we're actually on track to more than double the initial projection um, from this time last year.
Total, I'm sorry, I'm over just to see this, I apologize. The current balances that the uh, the town has is sixty-eight million.
Yep, so, so that's inclusive of cash as well as treasury and agency issued security investments. So.
The reason why it's spread out between so many, I mean, I can understand UBS Financial, you have two bank roles, Chase, Webster. Uh, you have three different Webster pools. I mean, obviously each probably the deposit is associated with something. If these yields look, I mean, if this is the 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 current APY, for majority of this, this is. Market to a little bit better than market, obviously, it's not the one seventy-five, the G three-five.
Right.
The sixty-eight million, because the initial slide this way uh, didn't say what, like, what the actual, so this is the actual. This current.
This is year-to-date. So this column here that I'm highlighting, this is the year-to-date interest in each account that is bearing interest. And then what I'm showing here are the balances as of today. I logged in and just. Just put in the balances, just so you can see the total picture of cash or investments that the town has on its books. Um, you know, so it's a sizable amount. A lot of this money was from prior year investment income. Um, but also the fact that the town council and the other funding boards budget ninety-eight point five percent. Uh, for expenses, but we collect over ninety-nine point five. So there's that one percent. Um, I guess surplus that we budget for every year. That over time has allowed the town to accumulate a very healthy cash position of unassigned fund balance. Um, again, some of this is inclusive of cash that we've already started to receive as part of the January tax collection cycle. Um, most of the money is actually going to start coming in later in the month. I have a separate tab. I'll just quickly pivot to that. Um, this looks back for fiscal years. Um, and I have projections. It's just an average of the prior four fiscal years. Just showing month by month typically what we're bringing in in tax collections. And the reason I share this is, is because as we receive the money, we don't necessarily need it all right away. So I'm able to take some of that money invested in three-month treasuries, for example, which are illiquid, right? I've never sold a security that we've owned, primarily because if you do that, you risk taking unrealized or realizing losses, which you don't want to do. So thankfully, we've never ever had a loss because we hold every bond to maturity. So we get our entire principal investment back and any interest or yield that is accrued on that um, security. So, so a buy and hold strategy guarantees we never lose money. It ensures that we're not locking up money too long. Uh, because some of this money, we will need to pay our expenses as we move um, through the fiscal year. Um, but our unassigned fund balance roughly twenty to twenty-five million is money that we never tap into. So that money, I'm going out even longer term, you know, sometimes up to two years.
Um, are you finding the treasury market is better than some of the banks? Because they're actually competing pretty heavily right now.
Yeah, the tre- treasuries right now are where the best yields are. Um, so on the three-month treasury I just bought yesterday, I invested ten million. We are getting four point five seven percent, whereas the interest rates that I've negotiated on, on our money market accounts. Um, four point one is the best rate that they're offering.
It's a short window, three months is nothing, right? So like, if you need to be that liquid for. Obviously, I'm the head of commercial lending for a commercial bank, so we're competing with the treasuries right now. We've had an outfox of about a billion dollars. Um, because if you don't need your money for three months, if we're offering four percent, we're offering four percent seven-five. It makes sense to do that, which hasn't happened in the last two, three decades.
Right. And and that's why I just did want to show this chart quickly. This is rates, um, in interest rates set by the Fed. Um, and so a lot of what I do is I'm closely following what the Fed is, is doing and they're planning another rate, a twenty-five basis point rate hike later this month. Or February first. But this just shows, I just went back ten years. Um, rates largely have been very low during this period. There was a slight increase in the early part of Trump's um, presidency. Um, but then COVID caused it to crash back down to zero, again, to help stimulate the economy, the Fed lowers rates. Um, but we've, we have not seen a rate hike like this um, in decades. Um, so, so that's really why I wanted to, felt it was important to talk about this because this has had some positive implications for the town. And for, you know, what we're expecting to bring in this year. But it does require having ongoing conversations with our, with our banks because if you don't talk to them, they just leave it where it is. So I called up one of our banking partners back in uh, July, start of the fiscal year. Bumped it up to about one point two percent. Called a month later, bumped up to two point two percent. Two months later, bumped up to three percent. Now, just as of, you know, like, three weeks ago, bumped it up to four point one percent. So there'll be continuing ongoing conversations. Thankfully, yesterday, our main banking relationship at Webster where most of this money is. Will just increase their rates to four point one percent to match one of our other um, banking partners.
Yeah, banks are the worst. Uh, but I, I, I will make one comment and uh, there, there's a thought to this is. Uh, being very liquid, right? Um, and layering in uh, the three month and being at four, seven, five is fantastic today. You're doing an absolutely excellent job. You know the market, you know, this is what I do every day. So like, you know, we're, we're, I'm hearing the same language and and appreciate that. There should be somewhat of a thought to do maybe some, i- i- if possible, if the, 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 the town has the liquidity. Now, three month is really nothing, right? You're, you're not on a hamster wheel, like, you know, you can last the ninety days is. You know, in my personal opinion, I think twelve to eighteen months, they're going to start whacking rates down pretty aggressively. So then, you know, kind of get the fuel back into the economy is if we had some longer term, if we had some liquidity, you just said you had twenty-five million. That you really never touch. Maybe a thought should be that it could be in six, twelve, two years. So that like, when, when that, you know, when that interest rate that heavily comes down, that you're still earning that premium. And that we could be touting, you know, how, how good of an idea it was at that later stage. Maybe not today, six months, nine months, four months. That we lock something off for a year, two years, three years, four years, if we don't need access to that liquidity. So that when rates plummet, you're like, we're still earning five, five and a half percent and the current market's two percent. Just a food for thought.
Yeah, so, and and that is the plan. You know, I have it um, a ladder of CDs.
It's the ladder, yeah, perfect.
That I've been building. Now, unfortunately, some of this ladder was being built when rates were basically in the basement at zero. And so some of those, you know, aren't maturing, you know, in the middle of twenty twenty, I was buying uh, agency issued securities. That were yielding around one point two percent, which is pretty good in a zero rate environment, but now obviously is underperforming. But as that matures over the course of this next year, um, the plan is then to reinvest it going out longer.
So book on the other side, protect it on the other side so that when things come sliding down that you're, you know, we're all having a big party after this meeting.
Exactly. So, and I'll just show this breakdown over here, just so you can see in UBS. Sort of what the breakdown is between CDs, treasuries, agency issued securities. Again, treasuries is where most of the action has been in the last six months. So that's what I've been prioritizing. And, you know, I've been working closely with the finance department to figure out, are there other pools of money? Um, sitting in some of these non-interest bearing accounts that we can put into interest-bearing accounts. Um, and so far, you know, Anne has worked on finding um, both the sewer um, and grants, right? Those are the two where there's a few million dollars in each that we can now move into a money market account, earning the four point one percent. Um, to earn some extra yield that previously was not earning any yield. You know, because she's been working closely on segregating some of the funds so that everything isn't commingled together. So that's work that we're currently gonna implement over the next few weeks. I did create a twelve step cash management plan. I've been working closely with our board of finance and keeping them appraised of, you know, execution of that plan. And so of the four steps, I'm sorry, of the twelve steps, five of them, we have a planned execution date by end of February. Then there are some other longer term things that we're going to talk about. One is about vendor payments, timing, you know, concept of trade credit, where instead of paying a vendor, you know, right away, which we don't necessarily always do. But we do pay pretty expeditiously. You know, if it's a big multinational vendor and they don't need the cash flow, why are we giving them our money so quickly rather than earning some extra interest off of it? You know, and looking at trade terms, you know, a lot of towns have sixty ninety day payment periods where they'll get a bill and they're paying ninety days later. Obviously, if it's a more local merchant, we don't want to do that to our local merchants. So prioritizing those payments earlier rather than the bigger multinational companies. But again, there there's some additional steps that we're going to work through and, you know, we have a good team to to figure this out. But anyway, happy to take any questions about this initiative. You know, again, our plan is to hopefully yield around one point three million this year versus the five hundred that we've initially projected when rates were a lot lower.
When you're working with your vendors in a zero interest rate environment, it really doesn't help you because where you're parking your money, you're not making anything. So that's good. But now if you get thirty days and if you have multiple vendors, you could park that somewhere earning four point seven five percent. That's extremely meaningful, especially with people that you were triple A rated credit, you know, town. So that that carries a lot of weight and you probably have heavy negotiating power with the vendors, given the the length of time you've been using them.
Absolutely.
Great, great strategy.
Thank you, and happy to include you in the conversations, too.
This is my end.
But but also, one other good, actually raised a good point about our our bonded debt. So while we do have a lot of bonded debt, the rates that we're now earning on our cash actually now exceeds the rates we're paying on our debt. Because over the last few years, we've been refinancing a lot of that debt when the rates were down in the basement. So I think about a year ago or so, the true interest cost was heaven, I think, like one point five eight percent on one of our big bonds, right? So we were only paying one point five eight percent interest on a twenty million dollar bond, and we're now earning over four percent. So we actually have a net surplus from from that. So.
Again, the the same reason to think about bookending the now higher interest rate environment, locking some things into a longer term. So that when things come down, that you continue to earn.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions out there, Mark or or Maria? Are you out there? Any any questions for? You good?
Yeah, great job. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Hi, Andrew. It's Kim Norton. Thank you so much for doing all this work, and it looks like you're just actively managing things, which is great for the taxpayer, as you said. I have a question. Do we have to pay capital gains on any of the interest that we earn? I'm just curious.
We, because we're a government entity, we do not have to pay any taxes, which is great.
That makes it even better. Okay, thank you so much.
And sweeter.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right, thank you.
Andrew, I just wanted to thank you because you have transformed the job of the treasurer for the town, and I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're an excellent steward. Seriously, excellent job, Andrew.
Thank you.
Great job. Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much. And we're gonna have you back. We want to hear, we want to hear, we want to hear more as we earn some more of this money. So we need, well, probably after the budget season, we're gonna need some good news.
After that renovation.
And we want to see if you're, we want to see if you're this popular when rates are going down.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, number seven, financial update, update of recent financial results. Josh Kaufman, welcome, Josh. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
And Anne as well, obviously. Welcome, Anne. Good to see you.
All right. Feel like it's been a while, but this is sort of the halfway point in the year, December. So now is as good a time as any. So. So on your screens and on your tablets as well. Let me just make this full screen, even though I know it's pretty hard to see. These are the year to date financials as of December thirty first, fifty percent through the year, like I said. And starting at the top.
Do you, do you, are we, Tucker, is that on our tablets?
It is, yeah.
Isn't it?
The last item.
Oh, monthly report. There you go. Yep, it's off the screen. Good. Got it. Everybody had it.
Numbers are small. I can try to.
Yeah, because that's an eye test for us up there.
Tough one. All right. Good as I can kind of get it. All right. So starting on the revenue side. The total overall revenue right now is at about sixty percent. Of course. Of course, that's mainly made up of tax collections, which is at sixty two percent, keeping pace with last year. Prior year collections is up at one hundred and fifty five percent, of course, due to the tireless efforts of the tax collector, who recently, I think, collected a past due tax bill of a hundred thousand, which was a nice grab.
Wow.
And this is two hundred twenty thousand over what last year kept out of. Building permits and conveyance fees are both at forty eight percent of what was budgeted, so they're kind of keeping pace with what we expected. But of course, that's lagging behind last year at about three hundred thousand ish each of them. But we kind of thought that was going to be the case. Onto parking, parking is at fifty two percent. But when you kind of break that down a little bit, permits are at three hundred and eighty thousand out of the four hundred and eighty thousand of what was budgeted with the expectation of another sixty five thousand coming in for business permits, which come in June. And not included in this is sort of a timing of some of the revenue being booked in parking meters for another hundred twenty ish thousand, hundred fifty thousand, the top of the number that's on there. So that really pushes parking into kind of a, you know, beating probably, hopefully, expectations of what we had set on the budget this year, which is good to kind of see that coming back. The kind of major one that's lagging behind, at least that seems to lag behind, is the other revenues baked into that number, which is twenty five percent of what was budgeted. Baked into that number, if you'll remember, we had budgeted about two point seven million from the bond premium to be transferred into the general fund to reimburse us for debt service interest. And so that really, that two point seven million is just a transfer that has not been made yet.
We haven't.
But it's cash in hand that we just have to bring over to the general fund and and bring that up. And so with that transfer over, that pushes us to sixty two percent of total budgeted revenues. And that's other revenues gets pushed up to, I think, sixty or seventy percent. And I won't touch on interest on investments because it's had a better presentation than I could have given. Are there any questions on the revenue side of things?
Tracking year over year, I mean.
I think it's it's, I mean, from me looking at it, it looks like we're in a really good spot year over year, but it's hard to, I think, make that comparison right now.
Because we had, we had a huge hole with parking last year and.
We did, yeah.
But it was made up with our funds.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Right. It was made up with our funds, but I I don't think those really offset in these presentations. I think they, it was mostly made up with conveyance fees and and building permits last year, which are still higher than the average, probably five year average, but they're slacking behind for last year. So it's a give and take.
Okay.
But the elevator speech is basically, there's no big surprises here. We're looking.
I don't think so. I think, you know, we're kind of on par with what we were budgeting and beating out expectations in in other places. I think probably interest on investments is going to be a huge boon. Parking coming back is going to be nice. But everything else probably will be hopefully as expect as expected.
Is parking or parking permits coming back?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
All right, expenses.
So expenses right now, fifty percent through the year, we're at forty four percent of expenses. So we're beating by one percent for last year where we were at this point. There isn't really anything to highlight in terms of specifics by department for expenses. But if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I talked earlier about energy costs, so that is that a, you see that as an issue?
So energy costs yesterday was actually approved the transfer from contingency, is that's what, no, so it was user savings on interest.
Special revenue fund that has some funds reserved for DPW in there. So we're going to, as needed, take transfers, we got the board of finance to transfer as needed as we start hitting those overages for electrical or gas oil. So as we, they're going to analyze it again per division because it gets, it doesn't go into one area, it goes down to all different departments. So as they see where they think it's going to move, then we would just do the transfer. We're not just going to do a bulk three hundred thousand. It's actually two hundred and ninety seven. So we'll do it as needed to transfer that that cost.
Is our electric rate going to double like the homeowners has?
For next, for next year or this year.
No, starting in January one.
Next year, you'll see the increase in the utilities.
Okay, that's my question. Is this, is it, because we're all waiting for our January. Hang on to your hats, right?
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
So this is great, and it's good to hear. About balance of year, are we expecting any surprise, surprises? Can't be expecting them, but I'd be expecting any kind of changes in the any bumps in the road.
I don't, I mean, it's it's hard to say. I don't think so.
Not right now, because utilities were the main ones, and then we had a couple of different things that came up, but nothing significant that we see on on the horizon. And then once we get through our budget and things we're working on right now, we want to work towards doing forecasts. Especially on, you know, salaries, things like that, as people move around, positions, see if there's any savings or overages because of different, different areas. But we want to look at a forecast to see where we think we might end up.
Don't ask that question, because any, a few years ago, somebody asked that question and then we had seventeen snowstorms.
Then we get COVID. I take it back.
Just kidding.
Knocking on someone.
Good question. All right, Maria, any questions out there? Mark, anything?
Where is this? I can't, I.
It's at the end.
Oh, at the very end. Go all the way down to the bottom.
To push the screen up, the last one on our tablet.
I know, I, well, okay, that's great. I'll figure it out. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a long day for you guys.
Oh, right.
Uh, budget, yeah, you're actually, you're up next.
Sure.
Number eight, budget, review and discussion of budget meeting process and calendar.
Sure. So I think you have the calendar on your tablets, right?
Yes.
So the process started in October, meeting or sending out a request to departments for their operating capital budgets as well as their performance measures and their department narratives, kind of to get a sense of what their accomplishments of the past couple of years have been and what they set for next year as as their main goals to tackle.
Should be here.
Over the couple of months of of putting that together, we kind of came to a consolidated budget packet that we then had a review process with the first selectman, Tucker, Cheryl, itself and Anne. That kind of think helped gain just a focused view on on all the aspects of what went into this budget year. What our challenges are going to be and just kind of gain a better understanding of of what goes into it. I think we were able to knock a couple of low hanging fruit down and just kind of see what our options, what our potential moves might be going from this point. So I think it was starting a couple of days ago, yesterday, I guess it feels like it was a couple of days ago. Starting yesterday, we had our first meeting with the board of selectmen, which was DPW and recreation, so two big guys. And we're just going to proceed to them and hopefully have something good to pass to the board of finance and then to you. The board of finance has a two and three quarters percent budget guidance that we're trying to keep departments to. I know it's tough, of course, especially now with inflation. But we're, of course, doing our best to keep it as lean as possible, of course. Yeah, and of course, right now, it's it's very much a working document. It's, there's a lot of moving pieces, things we might pull out, put back in, and it's, it's a it's a moving target, so, which it is until the end.
It's always.
He said interesting.
Can I ask a question? Josh, when you just said that there's a group that that you advised on the bumps on the road or focus more on what the economics were. Was that what led to the layoffs or termination of certain jobs?
I would say no, no.
No?
I mean, I I didn't advise necessarily. It's
Right.
A group that oversees, oversees the the kind of.
Departments come into us with budgets going through their budget line items, just a review of the budgets. That was all that that.
It would, it have nothing to do with personnel and cutting expenses.
No, we weren't involved in anything like that. It was just strictly the department, each department was coming in front of us to go through their pieces. The capital budget, tax supported budget and their operating budget, and that was it.
Okay, maybe Kevin can talk about that.
What layoffs, yeah.
Yeah, that's I.
Okay.
Is that what, is that the word on the street?
Yeah, yeah, I heard it from a couple of people, so.
Well, because if if that's the word on the street, we should correct that. Okay.
No layoffs, no layoffs out yet.
Yeah. I was just thinking, we probably should bring up what the board of finance approved last night was something that will change the format of the budget in terms of park and rec and the wedding fund. So we're, oh, I'm sorry. The board, in front of the board of finance last night, we presented the option, not the option, the request to set up a self sustaining fund. And it was made, the reason being park and rec programs, because they're restricted in the general fund. So if their budget is set at five hundred thousand, that's all they can spend on a program, and they have waiting lists for people wanting to get into different camps for the kids, different programs. So self sustaining fund, which is a typical fund for government for this reason, will give them the option that you set the budget up in the general, in the in the self sustaining fund, and when they want to open new programs, they set up a new budget for it, and they can do it right away. Right now, we're restricted and it's a shame that we have to say, sorry, you're on a waiting list because we just don't have the budget. So the board of finance last night approved moving strictly park and rec expenditures, a program revenue, program expense related, nothing to support the buildings, anything like that, purely basketball, you know, whatever the camp is or program, move it over to the self sustaining, along with the what we call the wedding fund now, too, because we have a self sustaining wedding at the Waviney, so that will move over there as well. So they they will be taken out of the budget, the main general fund budget, and moved over to a self sustain so that they can manage that better in regards to offering the most programs available for the residents.
Yeah, they they board of finance asked some really good questions regarding that. John Howe presented, and and there were a lot of questions back and forth about revenue streams and whether, how how that would work. You know,
Exactly.
with the with the money could be coming back into the general fund and, you know, that was, if you didn't see it, it's worth watching it because it's a, they asked a ton of questions, so.
They did. And and it was to do with that if the if the fund makes money, so it doesn't keep building. What you, what typically happens is you budget in your general fund, some funds that are going to come back from the park and rec, from the self sustaining fund, if it's making money. So we can cover the administration cost of the park and rec administration staff. So it it's a plus, but certainly for the park and rec to be able to offer programs.
So that way, if, for instance, if they offer paddle, instead of only having a discrete number of spots based on what their budget is, if it's a self sustaining fund, they can presumably allow as many people who want to subscribe to that as they can accommodate, given the space restrictions or what have you, because people are paying into that instead of it being a strict budget.
Exactly.
Line items. So this way, they can just accommodate it without having to come back and ask for more
Right.
money from a strict budget.
John used a recent example of, they had a daddy dance that sold that sold out in like eighteen minutes. And he said he would have loved to have a second, but they didn't have the the budget to do it, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so they did approve that fund. So we're, we're actually going to start it. We also asked for it to be started now. So we're in the, we're in the process of setting up that fund, and it's not an appropriation. It's not that the general fund is sending any money. It's going to generate its own money. We're doing it now because the spring programs are going to open up. And that's last year was when we had the the big problem of, you know, trying to get these programs going, and we had no funds to expand them. So we're going to start it now with, there was an approval to set up budgets of a hundred and fifty thousand in the self sustaining. So when the money, when we use the general fund money, now he's going to flip to be able to set the programs up and keep running them all summer.
Right. That happen was not included in that.
Lapin is not because it's not a self sustaining fund, so it 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 would take any funds from all the other programs to support it, so that should stay in the general, yeah.
Any other questions for Anne? Any other questions for Ann? Gosh, okay.
It couldn't come at a better time, being that our young population is growing so fast.
Coming out of COVID and every, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be great.
All the programs across the board, uh, uh, basketball, soccer, everything. Having three uh young boys uh in sports, it's, it's insane. The, the population boom. Across the board and having to get in early and like, it used to be, you know, kind of laissez faire. Uh, and now it's like, you know, once the D drops that you could sign up, it's like, oh, everything's small.
It's gone, right. And that's what we're trying to stop, yeah.
That dance up in about eighteen hours.
Oh, eighteen hours.
Yeah. Was not eighteen minutes.
Oh, that's a, that's a concert, sorry.
The dancer didn't make it, it was.
Yeah, the daddy daughter dance. That's a big one. All right. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we did appointments, so we can skip through that. So. Next up is committee reports. And our. You know, actually, before we do that, I just wanna, I wanna review our meeting for next week and make sure everybody's on the same page, so. Um, and it'll dovetail into that bylaws and ordinance uh committee. So. Our agenda for next. Thursday, the twenty-fifth. Is it Wednesday or Thursday? Wednesday, right? Wednesday, sorry. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, we're meeting at six P M. As discussed earlier, it's a public hearing. Uh, regarding the, the West Side Cell Tower. And uh, we're taking an, an hour on public comment, so we're gonna go from six to seven on that. And then at seven, we're gonna have a regular meeting. And the agenda for the regular meeting is to discuss to, special, it's a special meeting to discuss the renovations of the two twenty Elm. And hear the presentation for that as well as the twenty-eight Grove Street property uh. To, yeah, to approve the bond resolution. So. Um, I wanna encourage you guys to watch the Board of Finance meeting uh and make sure that you watch that because. That gives you a lot of background um on those subjects. So they covered that in, in full, so please watch that, so. Um, we might be able to shorten it up because we, we're gonna go from seven. And then hopefully at eight, we'll break out into the bylaws and ordinances to finish up the language on. The two, uh, both the Affordable Housing. Formation and the Utilities Commission. And I think there's one other one, Tom, right? The bu- the uh building, we have that ready?
Uh, the, almost. Yes, I think so. The.
Okay.
The requirement of town council approval for town to sell land and.
Okay. So again, one twenty-five, twenty-three, important meeting for the twelve of us, six P M. Public hearing. Seven P M. Special meeting, and then hopefully we'll wrap it up for an eight P M. Start of bylaws and ordinances. So. With that, I'll turn it over to Tom and Hillary, bylaws and ordinances.
Here was leader.
Well, we. So we're busy. We just had a meeting last night. Uh, and we're making progress on, as we just said, Affordable Housing Committee, uh Utilities Commission Revitalization. And um to implement the um, we didn't talk about this last night, but I think. It's fairly straightforward to um. Uh, Christina's initiation, wise initiation, the uh, to. To require a town council approval to, for the sale of land. So that's, that's, that's a lot to do, but I think we're doing well.
Yeah, you guys have been busy, so thank you. Thank you very much for all that work. A lot of work is going into those. All right, uh, Tom, you're up again. And Rita, education?
Rita, you wanna? Start?
Sure. I mean, I think the, it was just really the last meeting, so um, there was a motion to change the calendar. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three um. School year, so now Columbus Day is going to be. Uh, a day off. So that was one change to the calendar. And then they also reviewed. Um, the initial budget considerations and uh there was an increase in. Uh, the budget for the outdoor learning center. And those are the main points from the last. Meeting. And then there was a, unfortunately, there, there was a workshop this evening that we're missing, so we're gonna have to. Watch that and provide a summary for, for next time. Is there anything else, Ann?
I don't know that they record those, but maybe they do.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess we can't.
They got, the uh, the Board of Ed got submitted one, over one hundred questions, so you have a very proactive. Uh, group serving on the board and the administration's been, been busy answering those questions, but. With all the relatively new members on the board, that's a very healthy sign that they're just. Grabbing this thing by the horns and, and getting their arms around it.
Yeah.
To mix metaphors. I, I would say that. If um. In addition to what you mentioned, um. The increases in the budget aren't ironically so much inflation related. So.
Right.
One of the lucky things of locking in the teacher contract last year. Uh, you, you could say that was very wise, but of course, it was just in the normal cycle. It just worked beautifully.
Mm-hmm.
That that contract was closed, uh, executed before the, you know, the huge inflation hit.
Yeah.
So Darian is just in the opposite situation. You know, they're um, not only.
Have to celebrate that difference.
Celebrate, yeah, no, I don't, no, no, just to, just to talk to how lucky we are.
Yes, exactly.
That um, uh, you know, Darian not, not only is, is. Doing contract in an inflationary environment, but also had a tremendous teacher shortage.
Yeah.
And uh, one of the things that's amazing about, I, I just don't know how we can not all just applaud this. It's just phenomenal that, that. Our school district is not only um, has a, has a fairly modest budget, and I'll talk a second about, about that. Uh, budget growth, but also um, just lack these problems that we read about everywhere else in the press. Teacher shortages, bus driver shortages, things coming to a halt. And, and then the, the, the final thing is, is. Uh, Norwalk, just in the paper today, was talking about um, how much they have to spend to um. Cover the learning gaps from COVID.
Yeah.
And we're doing that too, and that's part of our budget increase, but it's a, it's really a, a tiny.
Lot less.
Change compared to what other districts have and, and keeping our kids in the classroom. Just had huge, not only learning advantages, but economic advantages. But what I was gonna say about the growth and, and, you know, Ann could explain this later, but uh, better, but um. If, if the growth in the overall budget compared to last year's, you know, budget is something like four point eight percent, actually. If you do apples to apples and say, well, what was spent last year versus this year, it's more like three point five because. Uh, there was a special appropriation that.
Right.
Mismatched spending and, and, and years. So it's, it's, it, it, it. Compared to what we're hearing about interest rate growth and everything else and inflation, you know, I, I think it's a pretty good, a pretty good number.
Good story. Well, then he also, I mean, I, and I'm not going into detail, but um, Dr. Letzti also just kind of reviewed all the successes, right? So from an education standpoint, from a, also from sports and from arts, I mean, there, there are just so many things we could talk about.
And we'll hear about that. But, but, but the, just the one thing that really has to be mentioned is. Uh, best teachers.
Yeah.
Number fifteen in the country.
Yeah.
Most desirable place for teachers to work, about the same like number seventeen in the country. It's, it's just phenomenal.
Well, and, and so that, by the way, that statistic, you take that in, in any industry. Um, so coming from, I did a lot of work with. Um, the food industry, right? So, so restaurant industry. And the biggest um, sort of factor of, of, of um. Customer satisfaction is staff satisfaction. So that trans, I think that, that whole concept transfers to every industry. If the people that are working for you. Wanna work for you, enjoy working for, you know, if their morale is high, they provide better service to the people that they're serving. So it's, it's for that to be the case, that we're number fifteen, that we're a place that teachers want to work. They will do a better job for our students and that's, that's really the goal.
Great.
And I suppose we let our kids know when they are National Merit Scholars.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What did you mean by outdoor learning center?
There's a, there's an outdoor learning center that has, that was funded and there were some inflationary um.
Oh, that.
Factors.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, so it's already, it, it, it's, it, it's already underway and.
But it's that the actual name, the outdoor learning center?
Am I saying it right? I thought it was.
Is it each school?
No, no, this was one particular one.
The one that's at the Board of Ed?
No, 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 no. Is that a particular school? I think it was at, at East School. Yeah, there was a particular project that was one of the, it's a, by the way, it's at the P T C run.
Okay.
Like driven, driven project.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and so there were just, there's, because of inflation, they, they're, they had to increase the. The budget. It's really not, it, we can talk, it's not that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not that crucial.
So while we're on the subject, the, you mentioned the, the Board of Ed had their workshop. Um, we should talk about. The liaisons to these different committees and the fact that we need to be working with your Board of Finance um counterparts when we do this, so. You all remember from the last time we went through the budget. Reaching out to your counterpart Board of Ed, uh, whatever, whatever that counterpart is, we need to arrange those meetings and. Try to reduce the number of meetings with town employees when possible. So like when we meet with Park and Rec. We wanna get together with Board of Finance and have one meeting together rather than having. Multiple meetings, so if we can strive to do that, that would be great. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Tucker sent that around, so we all have our counterparts and it's as easy as just putting an email together with everybody on it and just, you know, tip. If you're, if you're doing um Park and Rec, you put John Howe. And then the, your, you know, your counterparts, just start the email chain, say, when can we get together and meet? And uh, it works pretty seamlessly. All right, uh, financing government. I don't know if Mark is still on. I see Maria up there.
This Mark's on the call. Kind of just clarifies just something for Christine. It's just so we put that to bed, so you don't feel like this is really just um, it's the East School um. P T C and it's just an increase. It has nothing to do with our, our budget.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Maria, financing government, anything from you?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. All right, moving on, Health and Human Services. Penny?
Um, I was just gonna say that during, during the finance and government, I. Have something I'd like to introduce.
There you go, okay.
To that and everybody received an email from me um. That I would like to propose that we initiate charter review uh process. It is a lengthy, lengthy process. Uh, and ideally you want to, if you're going to have any recommendations uh for charter changes. Have those come before the public at a presidential year because that's your highest voter turnout. Um, and so if you've read, you know, what I wrote, um, though. Though our current charter um has a recommendation of it every ten year cycle. That puts us at twenty-six as opposed to twenty-four or twenty-eight. And since we had made a number of changes um in the last one. It might be a good idea to step back, look at those changes, see whether or not they're working, whether or not they have to be tweaked. Uh, and there were a number that were not further addressed um. Because what you tend to do is not have too many on um the ballot at the same time because. One issue could kill every, all of them. Uh, so you've, you have to be very careful about, you know, what you propose. So my proposal is to get this underway because it's gonna take a good, healthy year. Of study.
That's a lot of work.
And we are the ones that appoint the committee.
So i- if the goal would be to get it onto the ballot for the twenty-four um. Presidential election, where you had the broad, you know, the biggest turnout. And you start backing up all the hurdles you have to go through and all the approval processes you have to go through. I mean, it is, it definitely isn't too early to start talking about it cuz I remember the last time it. It does take a lot. I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of work and I think last time, if, correct me if I'm wrong, did it boil down like five questions?
Five questions.
And one of the, you know, of the five, a couple that stand out that have turned out really, really well were um. Having the Board of Finance have an independent uh chair, cuz we used to have that as first selectman, and I think that's worked out really well. Um, and then uh, the other was. Having uh more of an open voting for different positions on the council, I think was one of the uh.
Right, right.
So uh.
So, um.
You know, those are, those are just a couple of examples of things that were changed that. Went pretty well, but that'll be part of.
But I think the committee really needs to step back and really look at them and see whether or not. There are any little hiccups.
Yeah.
In, in any of those five um. And then some of the other issues, I mean, there was a long, long, long list of issues that had been studied. And some of them may be timely now when they weren't, you know, six years ago. Um, and there is um, a good deal of conversation going on around and about the state on. Um, some of the. Ways towns are governed may not be the structure that we have right now. That it could be a general manager and a political head or whatever. I mean, there are all kinds of configurations, but I think all those things. Because times do change, it's, it's a good thing to look at ourselves, how we operate ourselves. So I don't know whether or not you want to be. Government committee to. Discuss it further or proceed. With. Um, establishing the timeline and, and presenting it to the, to the council.
Yeah, usually that would happen in committee and then you bring it up to the council and it, you know, we, of, of all the things you wanna follow a process, this is the one.
Right. But is this something that you appoint a charter review committee?
Yeah, so the last time we did this, um, you know, we came up with a list of names of. All different walks from town. I mean, try to, try to spread it out. Obviously, it has to be balanced politically. To be balanced in a, in a number of ways and. And you put this Charter Revision Commission together and it's a, it's a lot of work. I mean, they, they, I don't know how many times they met, but it was, you know, it's, it's an extensive amount of. Research and work and, you know.
And interviews.
But to change the date, which is the fundamental question that we need to deal with first, right?
Well, I mean, as to whether or not we want it to come for the twenty-fourth, you know.
Right, so that's it. So.
Yes.
Is that, is that itself a charter change to change?
No, it's not a charter change.
It's, it's, it's recommended every ten years that this be looked at, but we, how long is it? How many years has it been since we did it?
Done sixteen.
So it's been.
Anyway, wh- wh- wherever it's, wherever the rules derive, I just think we need to have a, a, a published agenda item and take it up. That way.
So that, so then finance and government then should. Within the next month, have a meeting on this and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before our next.
Before our next meetings, have some recommendations.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, now Health and Human Services.
Okay.
Um, I have a few things if you want me to go over it, yeah.
Sure.
Um, Dr. Pierce was elected or reappointed as the chair. Food Bank is doubling, had doubled lately in terms of people using it. Energy assistance is also um. Has gone up in terms of residents requesting that. The Urgent Assessment Program, um, I guess the self referrals or the amount of cases that have been taken on have become less over time. So there was some discussion about uh how to advertise that program so more people learn about it and. Um, and there was also some discussion about the sustainability of the program. Not everyone wants it to continue, but when it, when ARPA funds stop in um. I think it's June of twenty twenty-three, how the um Urgent Assessment Care Program will be funded. And as you heard Patricia talking about there being a fundraiser to raise some money for the following year. Um, when that ends, and that's basically it. Unless you wanna add anything, Penny?
Yeah, I do. Um, I thought it was a very healthy discussion that commission had on how they are going to approach. The evaluation of the programs that come to them for funding. Um, that just don't roll it over every year um with the. You know, organizations that we do fund, so that they really are sensitive to what their priorities are and to make sure that those programs are indeed. Uh, addressing what their priorities are. Uh, they also had a very interesting discussion about what is the role of the commission with relation to the department? And um, with full recognition that the commission is there to assist the department. Is not there to manage the department, that that is the relationship of the first selectman. Um, as you know, Chief Executive Officer of our town. Um, but that the commission really needs to be sensitive to how they can assist um. The department and the programs, recognition programs, spreading word of the programs, that, you know, the sort of stuff. And so I'll just start here and just look quickly at all these brochures. Um, it gives you a really, really. Um, poignant um. Overview of just how many organizations our Health and Human Services interfaces with and. The supports that exist within the community and how they really are touch points to all of them. So.
Great. Thank you, thank you. For bringing that to our attention. All right, next up, Infrastructure Utilities, Christina.
Okay, well, I, I don't have an update per se. I have more questions than I have answers.
Yeah.
But um, my understanding, and I hope Kevin can. But, um, my understanding and I hope Kevin can provide some information, but the. Basically in May of last year, we were told that the federal government would be doing a site visit to check out ADA. Compliance and Waviney was a focus. And the number of violations and the type of violations that were recorded in the only report I was able to get. Um, as much as I requested the information to be more educated when I was. Um, already seen in the report, that information was not forthcoming, which I have a problem and any one of you would have a problem. If you want to learn something and the information is denied or delayed. But in any case, what I was really concerned about was that the renovations that we paid for. Um, on Waviney House have not met code and they will have to be redone. So I was confused as to why there was a request last, um, within the last two meetings. As to a contingency on Waviney House. And there was a contingency when we approved the original budget. But, uh, Tiger came back with a request for additional twenty percent contingency on a project that had already been approved, which. I have never seen in all the years I've been on town council happen before. So I'm wondering whether that twenty. Percent is going to offset the cost to redo some of the things that were done at Waviney. House and perhaps Kevin, you can provide us some information.
I don't think Tiger's on the call anymore. Yeah. So I mean, you know, I think.
Steve, I'm on the call.
Okay. Um, I mean, Tiger, just a couple of minutes. I mean, obviously we can have you back, um. At our next meeting and we can put it on the agenda and just run through it, but, uh.
Well, yeah, so we are still in negotiations with the Department of Justice. So given the fact that we're in negotiations with the Department of Justice. We can't divulge any facts and everything is attorney client privileged. Just between our attorney and the Department of Justice's attorney. So our attorney has told us that we cannot allow anything. To be discussed or shared. So that's what we had, uh, that's what he had mentioned when we had answered Christina's request. And with that, we cannot share any other information. The report itself shouldn't have even been shared. However, since it had already been out into the public. We gave it to Christina. So she was aware of it. As far as the additional contingency, there was no additional contingency. All we did was approve phase two and phase three, the contract level plus the contingency for those two levels. There was nothing, there was no doubling of the contingency on any project. And the contingency that were that there is only slated for that project. The Department of Justice has not come back and said. That we need to remediate or change any of the suspected violations, nor have we budgeted any monies towards that yet. So right now we're still in negotiations. The, the, the decision and the final report has not been. Um, produced. We're expecting that sometime in March and April. After another round of discussions with the, with the Department of Justice. We'll get that and then we'll know exactly what, what, uh, they're asking for us to do.
Okay.
So to answer that, uh, Tiger, I have to say that the FOIA. Um, regulation that the public may not be entitled to that information, that, that's not include the government.
Christina, Christina, I'm only telling you exactly what our town attorney told us to answer. That's, we asked him, we, we, we forwarded your request to him. And then he came back and said, we have provided enough information. There is nothing left for us to provide at this present moment.
So.
So I, I can't, I can't do anything more than what the town attorney tells me to do because he's the one who's actually in discussions with the Department of Justice and we are. In an advisory role, you know, and we are helping with that, but it's attorney to attorney. And if he tells us that we cannot provide any further information to anyone. Then we can't provide any further information to anyone.
Tiger, if I may, you did a presentation to the Board of Finance and alerted them as to the situation. Which was televised in one of the meetings and. The fact that you haven't come forth to town council and given us an update and at least alerted us to this, but we read it in the paper, it's unacceptable.
When did I give a, when did I give a presentation to the Board of Finance and not given one to the town council? It had to be as part of some other discussion.
Uh, guys, guys, we're, we're not gonna, we're not airing this out tonight. I mean, it's nine o'clock at night. I'm not going here. So, um. Obviously we've got work to do here and there's going to be negotiations between the DOJ and the town attorney. To go through a laundry list of different things. They're going to be pluses and minuses. They're going to come out with a report and that's where we're going to weigh in. And if we start weighing in now, it could end up costing us a lot more money. So I'm not into that. So. Um, let's give, give, give the, our attorney the time to, to get this report done and then we'll look at it. That's where I am.
Unacceptable.
Well, I agree to disagree. All right, uh, let's see. Next up, Land Use and Rec, uh, Robin sent a report. Luke, you, you got that there?
Yeah, uh, besides that report, I ha- I have no update other than the, uh. Uh, the, the huge wildly success of the swap shop at the transfer station that, um. Robin's been lead, and, and I feel extremely beneficial, like she's extremely buttoned up on top of everything. And just like learning from someone with so much experience, uh, I, I hope to add. To add value, uh, at, at some point beyond what she, she does, but I have learned a lot from what, what, what she's accomplished and she leads the charge and. I'm just very happy to be partnered with her, but a huge shout out for, for the swap shop down at the transfer station. Uh, it's a huge success and that, that was all driven a lot of it by, uh, by Robin.
Thank you. All right. So Robin sent out a quick update, um. Just to mention rockets and ice cream was, was approved for Waviney Park. Uh, Commission unanimously approved the Mead Park Playground sign, uh, from Friends of the Mead Park Playground. Um, that actually honors Steve Banco, I believe. Uh, construction of the upstairs bathroom has begun at Waviney House. Walls have been pulled down. Debris have been moved. Father, daughter dance, we mentioned that earlier. It's February eighteenth, sold out eighteen hours. Rec Department offering two winter sessions, after school programs. First session's already sold out. There was a huge Christmas tree recycling that went well, um, and a bunch of trees were. Uh, used for mulch, which is great to see. Uh, parts of the dog park have been fenced in, reseeded. Uh, there was problems with people going over the fence. Uh, warm weather program. Uh, warm weather's been a problem because the reseeded part looks nice and green, but it's not closed off. John Howe, uh, getting phone calls from people that want access to the area. John Howe also working with Town Hall on Waviney House rates. Uh, Commission designated members of the Waviney Playground Committee. All Park and Rec Commission meetings will be held at the Lapland Community Center going forward. And then, uh, she also had notes on the Conservation Commission, uh, Marty McLaughlin will be coming off the Commission. Approved by the Board of Selectmen and replaced by Anne Silvio. Uh, Luke touched on the swap shop, which is going really, really well. Uh, Chris Shipper asked, uh. About the parking pull off in front of Bristo, which is part of the Green Link Trail. Tiger, um. Said that the sidewalk from the park to Briscoe on one oh six is very doable. Wait, uh, waiting for a review from the Department of Transportation. Sidewalk from Bristo to Gower will have more hurdles in the town, in town surveying right now. Uh, Tiger will reach out to the State Police Commission, Town Council and neighbors to determine the route and feasibility. And finally, the Conservation Commission, Friends of, uh, Bristo. Uh, looking to negotiate with the land trust for land owned by the NCLT next to Bristo. Which is donated by the DeCosmo family. It's, uh, one point two acres in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the additional land will bring Briscoe, Bristo to a full eighteen acres. Chris Shipper's hoping that the New Canaan Land Trust will become a partner. Like the Canaan Garden Club and the possibility of a, of a draft agreement with the land trust becomes a steward, stewardship partner. So that was all covered in the conservation, uh, meeting. And thank you, Rob, and, uh, presenting a detailed report as usual. Uh, let's see. Next up, Public Safety. Rita, Mike, anything?
Uh, nothing really, uh, too pressing. Kevin hit on the public, I'm sorry, on the police department, um, build, uh, building. So there's nothing new there. Um, Chief Kralakowski is no longer Chief Kralakowski. We now have Chief D. Frederico. So, uh, we wish him well in his new job and wish Leon. Excellent in his new job. Uh, other than that, nothing else. The both departments, fire and EMS and police are just preparing their budgets and moving forward. So.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. New Canaan Library, uh, that's really moving along. I mean, if you have been by the library, they actually. Put down topsoil and temporary sod. So they actually, you drive by today and it's actually got grass outside, which is hard to believe, but. Um, that's really moving along. Well, they're hoping, uh. To be in and up and running sometime in February, which is, you know, you look in there and you say, how, how are they going to do it? But. Um, they're starting to move everything in and, uh. They're doing it floor by floor. So, um, things are moving along really, really well there and they're, they're. Still on schedule and on budget, which is, um, just an amazing thing to, to see. So. Um, there'll be, obviously, you know, I mentioned it last time that the Board of Finance beat us the punch. They're going to have a meeting in the library. So we should get on the, uh. Get on the agenda to have a meeting over there too. The, the boardroom, actually the boardroom furniture was delivered. So. Uh, so there's actually furniture now, uh, up there as well. So it's really, it's amazing how, uh, quickly that's all going to come into, uh, focus for them. So. Um, that's all I have. Um, anybody else?
Where are you, um, you're funding?
Funding for.
For the library and.
You mean for moving the nineteen thirteen? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, whatever funding they got up, they got two projects, right?
Right.
They have a finishing.
Yeah.
Of the, you know.
On the building, the building, um, committee is more about. Meeting with Turner Construction and the architects and the, and the actual hands on of the building itself. They really don't go into a lot of like the fundraising side of it. So I'm not really sure where they are in the fundraising.
Um, maybe they should come and do a presentation on a monthly basis. So we're updated.
Well, I asked, I asked Lisa Fern. Yeah.
Because the, uh, they came to the Board of Finance. So they anticipate doing their first draw on the line of credit in February, like probably three million dollars. Uh, they're beginning to run out of the, the funds that are collected. So we're going to advance funds toward their, their receivables for pledges. Um, they'll probably borrow at most six million dollars this year. And then, uh, in three, probably three tranches in the course of the year. So.
And what was their line of credit total?
Ten, ten million.
Ten million.
End up in ten.
It'd have been seven, so.
Well, but, but they've indicated they don't anticipate drawing more than six.
Yeah, we had started at a higher number. I think it was like seventeen or eighteen or something. And then we brought it down.
But I think they have four, forty five million dollars to raise for the building itself.
And then they have the nineteen thirteen to raise.
Yeah. They've got that to raise to, to finish it off on the inside and they'll have, they have enough to obviously get it moved. They got all the, the, the fencing's up, all the, all the plans are in place to get that going and they'll get, they'll get the building moved. And it's just a matter of, of the finishes inside the building.
You know, when they'll be moving it?
Uh, spring is when they're actually moving it. Uh, you'll see the demolition happening on the Lapum Wing, the wing that, uh, as they disconnect that. Once they get everything moved out of the, the, uh, building, they'll, they're going to demo the building that connects to the nineteen thirteen building. And then they'll move the thirteen, um, wolf movers will come in, shore everything up, and then you'll see them set up the, the tracks that will actually move the building back. So. Uh, it's going to be really interesting to watch. I mean, it's a really, really cool, um. Process that will go through and, um, you know, the, the exterior of the building as you drive by, when you start to see it with grass and with lighting and all the things that are going into it, it's really, it's going to be a, a, a really amazing. Uh, thing to have in town. So looking forward to, uh. It's got, you know, we're still probably a year. Sort of saying it's done, done, but.
My ten year old is asking to go do her homework here.
Yeah.
It's a very positive step that.
And you saw that little.
Ask her to do her homework. I'm happy to take hers.
There was a little article about the new, um. RF, RID or RFID, um, that you tag into every book and every, everything that goes out of there. When you return it, it'll go onto a conveyor belt and it has an automated system that'll. Put it back where it's supposed to go.
Yes.
New Canaan Chamber Music is scheduled to launch the new auditorium music wise on March second. So if you think we're not going to make that date. Please give me a call.
You know, the, as, as, as you would know on your house, um, one of the things that's on back order is a, is the main stove in the kitchen and the new teaching kitchen. So that. You know, that's the one thing that they're, they're sort of crossing their fingers because they can't get a CO until that stove gets, you know, all hooked up and ready to go. So, yeah, so. But they get, they'll, they'll have a temporary CO like for the auditorium. They'll be able to cordon off pieces of it and say, okay, this is open and. So, uh, but things are, things are rolling along.
I got a guy, Steve, if, uh, you need some help.
You got a guy?
I got a guy.
There's also another issue that I'd like to, um, put on our to do is we are way behind in nominating. Two members for the Board of Trustees.
We are, we are way behind. You're right. We're, we are constantly in search of people to, to get onto these committees. We're about to form a couple more committees that we're going to need to get people for.
Well, we, we need those two people on there to be overseeing the interests of.
Yes.
Our investment there.
Absolutely. We will do that. We gotta get some, we gotta, gotta shake the trees.
So then why are we not all putting in suggestions? Because I think really we.
We should, we should. We, let's put that on our agenda for next meeting. If we have it in writing, we'll, uh, come back to it again.
Twist some arms?
Yes. So February, um, February, if everybody could bring, February, if everybody could bring a couple of suggestions for that, that would be helpful. You know, give me some names.
Can anyone say what's involved in it? Cause I know some people that are interested, but they have no idea what the time commitment is or.
They, from, from my understanding, uh, and discussion with the library about when we were doing the, um. Um, memory and of understanding is they are full library board members with all the requirements of sitting on the board. Be it time on committees, going to monthly meetings. Um, expectations from, um. Support financially and promotion of the library in the community. Uh, but they also then are advisors back to the town bodies, uh, as to how. Our two point five plus, plus, plus monies are being, um.
Specifically the council. They're like, much like the audit committee comes back and reports, they're, those liaisons. Part of the MOU is to come back and, and report to the council. So.
And the annual contribution of the board member would be what?
I have no idea.
Is it twenty five thousand?
No.
If you want, I know. What is it?
I don't know what it is.
Oh, it's twenty five thousand. Is it ten? Ten.
A year or the term?
A year. Yeah. Ten a year, not twenty five.
And how many years is the appointment for?
Three.
Three years.
Okay.
I'm right.
So to be a, a member, you have to make a thirty thousand dollar commitment?
Well, that's, that's the, the board, the board has historically been an active board that, um, contributes to the annual. And to the operating. So I mean, that, over the years, the board members have contributed themselves, you know. To the, to the capital campaigns. So that they can go out, they always advertise that, that they have a fully. Fully invested board in terms of, you know, fundraising. So they want their board members obviously to be active as well.
Hmm. I don't know. It seems like you should make an exception for a town related board member.
No, and you know, and, and Kim, Kim just asked, is that written in the MOU? It's not, and it's not. I don't know. That's not a requirement of the board. It's an expectation of the board. So if we, if we get a couple of volunteers. That want to be this liaison, we could approach the library and say, hey, you know. We've got folks, but we're not in it, you know, these folks are not in it thirty thousand dollars over three years. I mean, they want to, they want to see what it's like first before they. You know, commit dollars. So.
Well, that, that then will fall to the trustees and the libraries to accepting those people that we've been told. I was told in no uncertain terms that they are full trustees with all the expectations of being a trustee.
I think, I think the library is very cooperative and I think they're open minded. So, um.
For ten million dollars, it seems like you should get a little.
But we shouldn't be generous people either. There might be people who are willing to serve, who would be happy to donate.
That's correct. That's correct.
You know, let's, let's not preclude people from who want to be here.
Happy to donate.
Heroes, I'd be there.
All right. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned nine thirteen PM. Uh, actually we need a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Penny, Penny and Christina. Thank you.
Oh.